We are, we are commencing our meeting. I'm calling this Board of Alderman meeting to order. Please, I really hate using this, so y'all, please help me with not having to do that. I'm calling the Board of Alderman meeting to order, please. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by invocation from Judge Carpenter, who we'd be delighted to have here tonight, and we'll have a moment of silence, so if you would, please. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Judge Carpenter, please.
Let us pray. He's trying to follow, "We come down, down for a loving love, a beautiful and a good and perfect God." We thank you to Master for your goodness, we thank you to your mercy. We thank you for the city of Starville, we thank you for our Honorable Mayor, our Vice Mayor, our Alderman, our Alderman. We thank you to Master for our clerk, we thank you for our City Attorney, and we thank you for all of our department ahead. We thank you for the men and women that sacrificed to protect us, those that protect our property, those that provide reparations for us, those that give us clean water, those that give us power, and all the other entities. God, we thank you for just the wonderful, loving communities. God, we pray over this agenda on today, and everything will be done in decent and in a way. God, we pray we will just continue to crown our Mayor and Alderman with more wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, and we will celebrate the will. God, we thank you for the sacrifice, we thank you for the dedication. And even Lord Portland, we thank you for that love. And God, we pray again for each and every one that are coming up for them on today, that everything will be done according to your will. God, we love you, may it so that we can just love you for the rest of our life.
All right, thank you all. All right, this is the recess meeting of Tuesday, June the 18th. This is our last meeting in June, and we will go through our agenda here in a moment. I just wanted to welcome everyone here. I know that, just for, just for fun, show of hands of those who are here for the annexation. All right, welcome. This is great. Thank you. All right, let me get through our, the first part of our agenda. Oh, thank you, okay. Let me get through the first part of our agenda. First item is approval of the official agenda, including consented items. Those consented items, those consented items are highlighted in yellow. Do I have any changes or alterations from the consent agenda? Alderman Vaughn.
Upon the mayor's business.
Yes, sir.
Pull that from consent, please, ma'am.
Which one?
Upon the mayor's business.
Yes, sir.
C.
C, okay. All right. With that in mind, do you also wish to pull B?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll pull, we'll pull B as well. All right. Anything else, Vice, I'm sorry, anything else, Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Vice Mayor, see your hand?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, I'm gonna ask for the floor again when we get to the Alderman comments. I just want to say, as to the consent agenda, I'm not going to put it off, but I do want to bring very special attention for the public to be aware of this very important agenda item under Roman numeral 10, Board Business Number B. The Board is gonna be approving a matter tonight to seek letters of interest for a position that will soon be vacant on the Starkville Octavia Hall Consolidated School District Board of Trustees, and there's gonna be a short window for letters of interest, and this Board has a precedent of having strict compliance with its deadlines, and that deadline is gonna be on Thursday at 5:00 of next week, June 27th. So, we want the media to get this out because there's always a lot of interest. It's probably the highest level of interest I've seen in almost 30 years, mine being on board. Actually, 26 of this, of this position here, the school board. So, we want, we want to get some good applicants. The Reverend Lee Brand, who has done a very distinguishable job in, in representing this, this school district, and is leaving according to his letter at the end of the next board meeting of the Starkville Octavia Hall Consolidated School District on July 9 of 2019. So, be sure you get your letter in. If you don't, if you're not seeking this position, be sure to tell others, because this is gonna go on the consent agenda, so this, it'll be grouped with a lot of other things. So, the deadline is 5:00 on June 27 of 2019, and it's my thinking, I don't know what this Board gonna do, they, it's gonna have to take this matter up at the next meeting, which will be on July the 2nd, 2019, because it is my opinion that the appointment will have to be effective July the 10 of 2019. So, we want to get some good applicants. We have one of the best school districts in the state. We need some great minds on this Board, and, and we, and I certainly, I would thank my colleagues, and I don't speak for them, want to get the best and most qualified person, whoever that may be. So, but be sure to get that out. And Mayor, I'm gonna yield the floor at this time. I think I'm gonna seek the floor once more, and that's under the, under the comments from Mayor and Board. So, Mayor, I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you for highlighting that, because that is, that is an important position, and we would appreciate anyone who is interested in doing so to please put in a letter of application. So, anyone else making any other changes? And Board, in case you have not noted, under Mayor's Business, there is a new item D, which is an agreement that we passed last time. It had the wrong entity on it, and I say wrong, at the time it wasn't wrong, but it is subsequently changed, so that the consideration of agreement with Excellence Ventures is to replace the, the Homestead Education Center. That was as it relates to J.L. King Park. And so, that's something that y'all have seen before. It's just a, a change of the entity. So, Alderman Little, I see your hand.
Can we add that to consent?
Uh, do we, is there any problem with adding that to consent? All right, seeing none, we put item D on consent. Any other recommendations or changes to the agenda, or the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. Do I have a motion for approval of the official agenda with the consented items as, as altered, gradually?
Motion.
I have a motion from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Fady. There we go. Further discussion. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, as is my practice, I will read the items that have been approved for the consent agenda. First item is consideration of the minutes of the May 21, 2019, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the June 4th, 2019, meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman of the City of Starkville. Under Mayor's Business, we have consideration for 16 youth and six coordinators to attend Mississippi Municipal League 2019 Mayor's Youth Council Track, June the 24th to 25th of 2019, and an approximate total cost of $2,500. Under item D, it's consideration of an agreement with Excellence Ventures, replacing the Homestead Education Center for the use of the J.L. King Center for the months of June and July 2019. Under Board Business, we have the item that was mentioned by the Vice Mayor, consideration of advertising for letters of interest for an appointment to a position ending March 2020 on the Starkville Octavia Hall Consolidated School District Board of Trustees, with the deadline for the letters of interest being 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, June 27 of 2019. On page four, we have, under Finance Administration, number two, consideration of acceptance of the May financial statements. Number three, consideration of budget adjustments for the fiscal year 9/30/19. Four, request authorization to enter into a lease and service agreement with a Neo Post postage machine with Memphis Communications Corporation, MCC Mississippi. On page five, we had item five, consideration of the approval of travel for LaShonda Wilson to attend Wednesday, June 26th, opening session of the MML Conference in Biloxi, to accept her municipal certified deputy clerk plaque with a cost not to exceed $400. Under the Fire Department, we have request permission for Chief, Fire Chief Yarborough to attend the Fire Rescue International Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, August the 7th through the 10th of 2019, with advanced travel not to exceed $1,300, plus the use of a city vehicle. Under Human Resources, we have item one, which is request authorization to hire Alexis Robinson as a temporary deputy court clerk in the Municipal Court Department. Number two is request authorization to hire Jalen Campbell as a seasonal maintenance worker in the Parks and Recreation Department. Number three, request authorization to hire Kendrick Bishop, MLO Bush, and Janice Davis as a maintenance workers in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Four is request authorization to hire Marcy Barber as a temporary maintenance workers, one in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Five is request authorization to advertise for firefighters in the Starkville Fire Department. Six, request authorization to advertise for two part-time program assistant positions in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department. Seven is request authorization to advertise for a temporary full-time code enforcement officer in the Community Development Department. Eight, request authorization to hire John Clark as aircraft lineman, FBO, in the Starkville Airport Department. Nine is request authorization to hire Christopher Thompson and Johnny Armstrong as part-time City Hall front desk receptionist in the Finance and Administration Department. Under Parks, we have item one, consideration of an HVAC maintenance agreement with Terry Service, Inc. for the sportsplex at a cost of $4,992 per year. Two is consideration to authorize Murphy paving to resurface the walking path at J.L. King Senior Memorial Park for the amount of $18,500, the lowest quote. Three is consideration to authorize a tennis complex use and management agreement between the Starkville Octavia Hall Consolidated School District, the Starkville Tennis Association, Inc., and the City of Starkville for the Starkville High Tennis Court Resurfacing Court Project. Under Leash Department, we have item one, which is consideration of the lowest and best quote of $756 per month for once-a-week cleaning from Jan Pro Cleaning Systems. Number two is consideration to apply for the Justice Assistance Grant for fiscal year '20 funding in the area of equipment, two radar speed limit signs with a 25% match grant up to $5,000. Under Utilities, we have number one, request approval of the lowest and best quote from Wesco Distribution for the purpose, for the purchase of optical ground wire material only in the amount of $30,750. Number two is request approval for Orlando Smith and Justin Hatcher with the Electric Division of Starkville Utilities to travel to Scottsboro, Alabama, to attend the TV PPA Lineman Apprenticeship Operation, Lab 3, on July 22nd through the 26th, 2019, at a cost not to exceed $3,500 total. Number three is request approval to enter into special facilities agreement between Starkville Utilities and Southwire Company, LLC, for power factor correction facilities. Number four is request approval for Starkville Utilities to enter into the project agreement with Southwire to install a new underground 13 KV circuit to the Southwire plant. And number five is request approval for Starkville Utilities to enter into a service agreement with Building Technology Services, LLC, for automatic fire sprinkler equipment inspection service. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
Most welcome, Alderman Vaughn.
Mayor might be recognized.
Um, yes, Mr. Latimer.
Uh, Board, I just got some text communication from Mr. Havlin and Ms. Corbin that the public hearing, the CU public hearing related to the mobile home needs to be pulled tonight because that was advertised for July 2nd and not tonight, and the applicant has been made aware of that. So, I would recommend pulling that from the agenda.
All right. We will strike item 8A, which is the public hearing consideration of CU 1906, from the agenda. All right, the next item on the agenda is under announcements and comments. Under Mayor's Comments, I have the great privilege of introducing new employees. And so, as such, I have employee introductions in front of me, and if you would, please, and I see Nam back there smiling, because he thinks I'm gonna mispronounce names. So, we'll just see. Um, all right, these are the new employees who we'd like to put a face to a name, so we always ask them to come forward. In this case, we're gonna start with firefighters. So, Chief Yarborough, where, there you are. Okay, we have Zaking Hawkins. He's not here either. Okay. Chief, you just shortened my spiel a lot, didn't you? Okay. How about Preston Newman? He's not here. Chief, would you like to introduce yourself? All right, well, we will scratch through the firefighter group here. All right, how about the deputy court clerk, Shay Holmes? There we go. Hello. So, Shay Holmes is from Uppora, Mississippi, and is a graduate of East Mississippi Community College, where she majored in pre-law. Prior to joining the City of Starkville, Shay was a deputy clerk for Justice Court of Webster County. Shay enjoys cooking, watching The Young and Restless, and spending time with her two daughters, Sanaya and Marilyn. Her and her family attend Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church in Belle Fountain. And I must say, Shay also interviewed for the deputy, for the clerk position, and she did a wonderful interview, so we're delighted to have you on board. So, if we would welcome Shay Holmes as deputy court clerk.
Thank you.
All right, we next have, under Starkville Utilities, we have Cody Dupree. Cody Dupree's from New Orleans, Louisiana. He's currently pursuing an industrial technology degree from Mississippi State. Before joining the City of Starkville, Cody earned his helicopter pilot's license. High five to you, my friend, and worked for several helicopter companies, as well as the Jefferson Parish Sewage Department. During his free time, Cody enjoys spending time with his fiancee and their two children. Welcome, Cody. Thank you so much. We appreciate you being with us. All right, also under Starkville Utilities, we have Brad, Brady Haynes, who's an apprentice lineman. Brady is from Walthall, Mississippi, and is a graduate of Uppora High School. Brady has also attended Holmes Community College, where he studied to become a utility lineman. Prior to joining the City of Starkville, Brady was a team leader for Tractor Supply Company. He enjoys spending time with his family and girlfriend, Ashley Avery, as well as hunting, fishing, and being outdoors. He's a member of the Grenada Church of God. Welcome. All right, also under Starkville Utilities, we have Noah Jones, apprentice lineman. Mr. Jones is from Uppora, Mississippi, Uppora, we got a couple of Upporas here, and is a graduate of Uppora High School. He attended Holmes Community College and Mississippi State University, majoring in forestry. Noah returned to Holmes, where he completed lineman school. Before joining the City of Starkville, he was a clerk at the Neighbor's Home Center. During his free time, Noah enjoys being outdoors, hunting, fishing, as well as spending time with his family and girlfriend, and he attends the Church of God in Maven, Mississippi. Welcome, Noah. And last but not least, I think that's gonna be all it. Um, we have Joshua Reed. He is an apprentice lineman. Joshua is from Lewisville, Mississippi. He received an associate's degree in electrical technology and his utility lineman certificate from East Mississippi Community College. Previously, Joshua worked for the Mississippi Forestry Commission, cruising timber and suppressing fires. When time permits, Joshua enjoys spending time with his family, as well as hunting and fishing. Joshua attends Pine Lake Church in Starkville, Mississippi. Welcome, Joshua. We are excited to have all these new folks on board. I think that's great. All right, and other comments at this point, I have none. We will, we will be having some, some more dialogues that relates to the public hearing on the annexation, but as it stands right now, I will conclude comments. And do we have Vice Mayor? I knew that you did, so you go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say good evening to all of our citizens out there. It just makes me feel real good when I walk in the room and see all of the citizens here, and, as I mentioned earlier, I've been at this about 26 years now, and, and just want to say, when I walk in, you know, I just see all the people here, it makes me feel good because it shows and tells me that, how interested you are in government. This is your building, this is your city, this is your mayor, this is your vice mayor, and these are your Alderman. We work for you, and, and you don't work for us. So, hopefully, tonight, everybody who has, wants to speak, hopefully this mayor and Board will let everybody who's here wants to be heard, be heard. That is not only on annexation, that is on any subject matter. You know, this is what these meetings are for. It's not for us to come up here and leave here in a hurry. It's for the, for the, the people to give us whatever input and feedback that you want. Your issue is important to me. Just take your time within the rules and, and be hurried, and it's very rare when I walk in here, when I walked through that door, you know, I was not in a rush to get up here to this seat, because you are important to me, because without you, I would not be here. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and hopefully you know I'm very sincere about that, and, because I'm still here after all these number of years. So, I've seen a lot of people come here on all these issues, and, and that's what makes our government so great, because you give the feedback and input and directions and the thoughts and comments that you desire for us to consider. Your issues are important to us, and they're definitely important to me. So, I just wanna just thank all of you for being here. I appreciate you. Regardless of what ward you're from, if none of you are from Ward 6, you still are my constituents, because I'm glad to see you here. I told the minister a few minutes ago, I just enjoy being around people, Reverend Carpenter and the other two ministers. I say, you know, when I'm around some of God's men, I just have to linger out for a while. These, you know, just around God's people. It's just good to be here. And I'm just very thankful, and, and I came here just to listen to all of you. I'm in no hurry. You know, I'm gonna be here until, until everybody gets done, until Reverend Carpenter, until the benediction is given. You know, you, you know about the benediction, right, Reverend? Yes, sir. So, that's what we're gonna do. And Mayor, I want, these comments are very important to me, and these people are very important to me. And so, so when you see the Vice Mayor coming in and don't get a hurry to his seat, that's because the people are more important than this seat up here. I get here when I can, and I'm not gonna be rushed when I walked in that door. No, this is my seventh term. I love this, this job, and, and that means I love the people in this city, because Starkville's a great place, and these are great people who live here. And again, we thank all of you. You keep coming to our meetings, because this is your meeting, because without you, there would be no City Hall, there would be no meetings. Thanks again, and I'm gonna announce to the mayor, so she knows that I'm not through talking until I announce I yield the floor. So, now I'm gonna yield the floor, and she knows I'm finished talking for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, Alderman Carver.
I'm gonna ask, just in regards to the shooting eight days ago, yeah, eight days ago. I know we all filtered a ton of phone calls and emails and questions, and then I asked this Friday in the work session, when you were out representing the city, coming up on Sunday, if they would be represented with the police force, and that was something I was told that the mayor and the police chief had, I don't know if there's any official action, and I've been asked, also this last weekend, we had 100-plus teams in town, and I was told that the police force was directed to have personnel on. Has there been anything that I can tell, and we can tell the, the public, that we will have a police force at any public gathering, or?
Well, we, we have, we have met on that, and we have established our points of contact between the Police Department and the Parks Department. We will be notifying the Board when we have events that we are going to put police presence at. That will be associated with tournaments, certainly all tournaments, and activities out at the park. This weekend, we've got a tournament going on, so the police are set up to be out there at that point in time. We have kickball tournament tonight, I believe, and tomorrow night, and they'll be out there. So, we're going to stay in constant contact with Parks, to know what's going on out in our park, and to that end, we will have a presence.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll say this is something that's totally out of character for the City of Starkville. Obviously, the individuals that perpetrated the crime are not from this area, and this has become a tournament destination city.
Alderman Carver?
Go ahead.
If we could get all the phone silence, please.
This has become a tournament destination city, and also this Board and 72% of the public have, have decided this is gonna be an emphasis on sports in the, in the near future. This is something that I, I still, you know, having a family there, then having a little league team I'm coaching there, and, and that's something that we really talk to the children and, uh...
Alderman Carver, hang on a second.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Got him.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, this is something that, you know, we just talked to the kids about, and got them back out there playing the next night, and calmed a lot of fears, but I think this is something, if I had an opinion on it, I would say we'd never have this situation again, but I thank the police for what they did in that situation, and what I saw the next, the next night, and, and all the way up to last night, which y'all, y'all have had people around, and obviously, I think, much like the cameras we have that serve as a deterrent, the, the presence of anything police-related can serve as a deterrent. So, thank you.
Well, and we also talked to Security Solutions, who've been working on our cameras around the community. They're going to make sure that we have a camera that is, sits directly across from the Key Park, that will have a, have an eye on that entrance area. So, I think that we have, we are working on it. The security cameras obviously mean something to us, as does our police presence, and any other vigilance of our community members, you know, anytime you see anything, that's part of what we do, is we all call when we see issues. That's, as a community, that's what we try to do, is to look, is keep an eye out for one another. So, I encourage any of you, if you see things that don't look right, let's make sure that we are aware of them and, and make others known, or make, make it known to others. So, thank you very much, Alderman Carver. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. The next item we have is Citizens Comments. And Citizens Comments is, is a time when we have three minutes, and our city clerk keeps that timer, so you have an opportunity to come forward and say anything to the Board for that period of three minutes. And what I will say to you is, for those of you who are here for annexation, we have an annexation public hearing that is set, so if annexation is on your mind, if you would wait until that opportunity, then that will allow us to cover that, that particular topic at one time. So, this is under Citizens Comments. Mr. Turner, and this is not normally where we interact with anyone. This is just an opportunity for information to be shared. Mr. Turner?
Good evening to the Mayor and Board. My name is Avon Turner Ward. Seven to the Mayor and to the police chief.
Good evening, Mr. Turner.
Um, yeah, I'd say I'd do a background check on myself to try to keep me focused. Um, also, uh, it'll be three years, just hope you lie that, uh, someone took my brother out, but, uh, 2014, he were with me. I had surgery, and it took a year for them to get situated on how that they were gonna take him out, but, uh, bodyguards gonna be kinda close with me. The, uh, the cameras are, if, if afraid the people kinda thought it was police, uh, present with the red and blue, but then they, uh, figured out that they, they were cameras. So, uh, they are very at ease that we have cameras, and we also have police presence. And my two, uh, my two years that I took, Civil and Police Academy, learned a lot. Uh, the randoms, you got the right to man inside, anything be held against you in cold law, if you don't have attorney, we will provide one for you. It's always two sides to everything. People getting mad with officers and, and they be wrong. But , uh, when you know better, then you do better, and, uh, that's just some concerns I was just.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wishing to speak under Citizens Comments?
Mayor, Board, my name is John Tofford. Ward 6. Oh, it's been nine months since we've been out of our home. I'm really not gonna go into that a whole lot, because it's really not your concern. But I do want to talk about the annexation. You annex Highway 12, but you didn't take in Sunset, but you took in the north side of Highway 12, all the way to 182. But there's been very little development in that area. In the last 22-plus years, the only movement that has happened beyond 182 is the Dollar General store. You annex Rock Hill, there's been very little done in that area. When I lived on White Drive, I could walk to Sunflower. When I lived... I lived on White Drive, I could walk to Sunflower. When I lived down Highway Twenty-Five, I could walk to Kroger, order Piggly Wiggly. Now, everything seems to be right along the Twelve corridor. So the city is not growing north, and it, and you put Pretty Lights out east, but the city is not growing that way. I'm, I'm just really wondering, I mean, outside of taxes, really, what is your interest? What is your interest?
Y'all, please don't do that. It, there, there is, I mean, we, we all wanna hear what everyone has to say, but we need not go into the applause, okay? I'd appreciate it. All right, thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak?
Does new mayor, vice mayor?
Yes, sir.
Hello?
Mr. Taylor?
Uh, my name is Chris Taylor Ward Seven. And, you know, we're talking about security there, Mr. Carver. But you gotta remember, we need to make sure that when y'all doing the budget, do not cut the police budget. Do not. They need more people, since you saying you got to have extra people at all events. I know y'all be crying about the budget and paying overtime. But if they do it, they need to be paid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. All right, anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, mayor, vice mayor, Alderman.
Yes, sir.
I talked to you...
If you'd identify yourself, please.
My name is Milton Jones. I live at 104 Houghton Street.
Mr. Jones.
And I talked to you about two years ago about the water lines over there. When the trucks runs over, the garbage trucks runs over the pipe, up the street, the pipes bust. If any kind of large truck come up, the pipes bust. And I came, you came over to look at it. I showed you how many patches there were. I think it was about twenty-some patches on the street, maybe from here to the next courthouse. And some of those patches have been patched over. These patches been patched year after year for the last twenty-five years. And we actually need some new pipes under there, they're old pipes. I was born in fifty-four, I think my parents' house was there in sixty. All those pipes is gone. When you can drive up, you call the city to repair. And repair after month, after month. Sometimes the pipe get busted twice a month. Could you tell me when could you replace these water pipes so that the water won't wash our house, or the way foundation of the house? Because usually when they bust, they just don't get fixed that day. Sometimes it might take a week. Sometimes it might take, and then water's running from up the street, down the street, and it's running in the foundation of people's houses. And everybody over there just about own their houses. And it's a nice neighborhood, West Main right up here. And it's been there just about ever since, in, in the endings. That's first part of Starkville. And we need those fixed. Could you help us out? Give me a debt, deadline, when you're, this, this I talked to you and showed you just about two years ago. Can you tell me when, when can we provide it up when you?
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
May I be, Reverend, now?
In a moment. Uh, Mr. Jones, one of the things that I think we did, as I recall, was that we had, you were having large garbage trucks that were coming up the street, and we've now gone to small garbage trucks. Is that correct, Calvert, Mr. Ware? Is that correct? Okay. And the next thing will be that we'll be looking at doing the, the water lines. And Mr. Kemp is gonna be the one doing that, and I'll visit with Mr. Kemp and see when we'll be replacing those.
Okay, do you know, have any kind of time?
I don't until I talk to Mr. Kemp.
Okay, because we need to, because it's costing taxpayers money to constantly do the same thing over every month.
Yes, sir. And, and if you, if you look around, one of the things that we've been doing is replacing water and sewer lines in large areas of our community, in residential areas of our community. So it'll be on the list, I promise. Alderman Vaughn?
Mayor, that already in progress. It's in progress.
All right, good. There we go. Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. Appreciate that. Okay, anyone else wishing to make citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none, I will close it as citizens' comments. We have no public appearances, and we now have a public hearing. And the public hearing is what everyone is here for. So I'm going to begin this with a little narrative, because I actually have been asked to. I was not intended to do that first up, but I thought I, I will go ahead and do that, since everyone is here. Part of, Matt, would you be so kind, can you go pull up the annexation that's on our website? Just so that map will be there? Anyway, we'll, we'll let him do that, and it should show up on the screen here at some point. But one of the things, when I was running for election, which y'all didn't vote for me, because you're not in the city, right, that I was, I was concerned about having was annexation and adding to what I believe to be the areas of our community that are very close to our current city limits, but that are not a part of our urban environment, but people think they are. So I, I ran on this as a, as a platform. So this is one of the things I'm interested in, concerned about. And so from that perspective, I have proceeded with this. We've been looking at this for almost two years now. It'll be July when we came into office. So we started looking at this in the fall of 2017. And what we did was, we got Slaughter and Associates to study the area that is around the city. We looked at areas to the north, to the west, to the south, and to the east. And the board, in its determination of a group of seven, voted to go to the east, in the areas that you see that are highlighted there, that are in the red. We had them listed as Area A and Area B, and we have moved forward with an ordinance for both Area A and B, which includes along 182 there, to Sixteenth Section Road, up to incorporate the area that is along the 82 bypass, the 182 area, and down into East Lee Boulevard, and around the University Estates and Shealy Hills area. So that is a, it includes, obviously, Ford Place. It includes the areas that are representative of pretty much Starkville as it relates to the 82 bypass. If you'll notice, the 1998 annexation, the green line, we, for, for the reasons that I'm to understand, I wasn't here in 1998, so let me say that. But my understanding was, the reason we stopped where we did, and didn't go out to pick up the, the Ford dealership, as well as the microtel in those areas out in there, were because the school district were separated at that point in time. And that would have negatively impacted the school district at that point in time. And they opted not to do that. And so I can only speak from that anecdotally, because I wasn't here at the time, but that's what I've been told. So I heard someone ask about why we didn't, you know, why we didn't go on out there. And that was one of the reasons, is it would have negatively impacted the, the Octavale County School District at that point in time. We are no longer in that situation, because we have a consolidated school district. So in looking at these areas, each board member had a different focus on the things they were interested in. I was interested in adding population. I was interested in, you know, controlling our, our areas. I was interested in providing people who are close to the city, but are actually not in the city, but people assume that you're in the city, right? So we get a lot of responses and calls about why aren't we doing this, or why aren't we doing that. So one of the things that, from my perspective, is the perception of someone who's in the city, but is a part of an urban environment, but not in the urban environment, and not paying adware taxes to go with it, but are enjoying the parts of being in, in the city. So the part of what you do is you look at what we can do and what we provide. And what a court will look at is the twelve indicia of reasonableness. And I will try to be quick with this, because I know probably a lot of folks don't really necessarily care about it, but just, just in point of providing information. The need for expansion is the municipality's need for expansion. Some of the, some of the things that are considered is spillover development in the proposed annex area. The need to maintain and, and expand the city's tax base. Limitations that are due to geography and surrounding cities. In our case, MSU is one of our limitations. The cities need to exercise control over the proposed annexation area. Number two is whether the area sought to be annexed is reasonably within the path of growth. Well, it absolutely is. Most of what's happening is going to the north. You look at, there's a development off of Garrett Road. There's, there, the car dealership, the hotels that are out there. All of that has happened since our 1998 annexation. The accessibility of the proposed annexation area by city streets, increased urban development in the annexation area. The adjacencies, adjacency of the proposed annexation area to the city. Number three is potential health hazards from sewage and waste disposal in the annex areas. A large number of septic tanks. I know that there are some. I also know that some of y'all are gonna go on to septic tank, septic association, or sewage association, excuse me. But there are some who still remain, who will be on septic tanks. Municipality's financial ability to make the improvements and furnish municipal services promised. The present financial condition of the municipality. Our sales tax revenue history. The financial plan and department reports proposed for implementing and fiscally carrying out the annexation. Our fund balances and our bonding capacity. And the expected amount of revenue to be received from taxes in the annexed area. Number five is the need for zoning and overall planning in the area, some of which include the need for building and zoning ordinances. The need for zoning and planning in the proposed annexation area in order to ensure public safety and welfare. The need for enforcement of zoning ordinances. Number six is the need for municipal services in the areas sought to be annexed. Plan of the city to provide first response fire protection. Adequacy of the fire protection. Plan of the city to provide police protection. And the plan of the city to provide increased solid waste collection. Number seven is whether, whether there are natural barriers between the city and the, and the proposed annexed area. Number eight is the past performance and time element involved in the city's provision of services to its present residents. Number nine is the impact, or economic or otherwise, of the annexation upon those who live in or own property in the area proposed for annexation. That would be you guys. The, emphasizing the fairness to all parties has always been a proper focus of, of the reasonableness. They hold that municipalities must demonstrate through plans and otherwise that residents of annexed areas will receive something of value in return for their tax dollars in order to carry the burden of showing reasonableness. That any adverse impact, economic or otherwise, which will probably be experienced by those who live in and own property in, in the annex area, the mere fact that residents and landowners will have to start paying city property taxes is not sufficient to show unreasonableness. Number ten is the impact of annexation upon the voting strength of protected minority groups. Number eleven is whether the property owners or other inhabitants of the area sought to be annexed have in the past or for the foreseeable future. Unless annexed, will enjoy the economic and social benefits of proximity to the municipality without paying their fair share of taxes. And then, number twelve is any other factors that suggest reasonableness per the court's determination. So that's just to give you some sense of what the court looks at, and what we, we as a city would be emphasizing in our proposed annexation of the areas that y'all are, y'all are residing in. So from that standpoint, do I have any board members who wish to speak? Alderman Carver?
Yeah, I just, for some individuals, I hadn't been here before, I typically just take notes as the week goes, weeks go on, or months go on, and then I just kinda come to the meeting and say my thoughts and my opinions on where I'm at from all the different calls. But I'll say this, from a campaign platform standpoint, and I'm probably guilty of this, is typically politicians and elected officials make a list, and then four years when they run for reelection, you know, you wanna say, I did this, this, and this, I didn't get this completed. But that's not, that's not, in my opinion, a good reason to have an annexation. Because I know you were against it, or for it, in the beginning, and I've kinda been against it. And the reason is, and we talked about this, and, you know, the whole goal was to have thirty thousand. We kept hearing that number from a threshold and retail strategy, marketing, recruitment, and to have MSU within the city limits. And so immediately off the bat, MSU and their legal counsel said they didn't wanna have a part of it. And then it's been shaved back now, I think, to twenty-six, twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven or so.
It's twenty-seven thousand. So those two goals have not been met, but it's continued to be pushed down, down the line, and we are where we are today. The main thing is we're gonna look at twelve factors. This will be argued in front of a chancellor, and maybe the city attorney can, can attest to this later. But the services from the 1998 annexation have still not been provided to certain individuals who were annexed then. I do think that was a too large of an annexation at the time, just from the history. I know that before, everyone on the board except for Vice Mayor Perkins, before our time. But I think that was too much of an annexation, and we're still grappling with that effect. There's gonna be an argument that we can go ahead and have this annexation, because it's not economically feasible to provide service to those six or eight pockets of individuals that we still haven't provided service to. Whether or not it's economically feasible, I don't know what the dollar sign is, but, you know, when you talk about economic feasibility, you talk about these individuals that have called me and said, well, I've been paying taxes for twenty-one years, and I've gotten zero return on investment. So, you know, they could argue economic feasibility from both sides. I think we need to provide service to those individuals. I think this city does do a pretty good job from sewer and water and capital. This, this board has done a pretty good job providing services to some individuals. And let's go and, and, and let's solve that problem. So if somebody's got, wants to debate, you know, services haven't been provided to certain individuals, let's, let's solve that and then come back. I think this is too early. Quality of life, we hear that, that term a lot, and I've heard it, I've heard it used in a lot of different ways in, in my ten years on the board. But who in here purchased the property that probably interested, who in here purchased the property that they're here representing tonight because of its location and the fact that it wasn't inside city limits? So, well, yeah, and, and the mayor had a good point. And we, we get some pretty heated discussions up here, but hold all applause, and, and, and we've had some individuals, I've already seen a couple here, that have, has been really heated over the years on certain things. And it's just out of respect to your neighbors to hold your applause and comments, and, and that's just out of respect to everybody in the room. But, you know, the individuals that, that bought that, that property outside of the city limits, you know, that's their right to do that. And, and I feel like almost they're being encroached upon for our campaign platform, and that's nothing personal. But, you know, you, you chose that for a reason. And quality of life can say, well, you know, if you wanna live in the city, and if you wanna live in middle of New York City, that's what you choose to be your quality of life. But if, if I personally moved to the country in a rural set, and I've chose that quality of life, so it can be argued both ways. It doesn't mean that you only get the better quality of life if you live within the city limits of municipalities. So the argument that there's individuals that are always on the city limit, on an edge, receiving municipal services without paying full benefit, is a false argument for the fact that there'll always be a city limit. And so an individual that's living, we have tons of people that drive from Columbus, Mathiston, Caledonia. I hear people driving from Tuscaloosa to work here, just all over. So the fact that they're getting, and I appreciate that, they're shopping here, they're going to ballgames here, they're investing in this community. But it's not a penalty for doing that. And it's not a penalty that you live just on the outside of a city limit. It's not a penalty that you live within the city limits, but that's a choice, and that's a quality of life issue. I think that we don't have the personnel right now. I think police and fire will be, police, police is always gonna argue they don't have enough people. You heard Mr. Taylor say that tonight. I think that's a very valid argument. I think the police will immediately have to have some investments within their department, and fire protection will immediately have to have some investments within their department. But from a sanitation, I think it will immediately, you'll see that benefit. But from all other infrastructure issues, I think that it will be years in the making. And the argument would be, well, no, it, it won't be. It'll be immediately, but then you'll say, where's the twenty-one year, the twenty-one year fix to that problem? So, you know, until you, until I can provide services to you, then I don't think I can sit there and tell you that overnight, you're gonna have a hundred percent return on investment on your taxpayer dollars. So. And then last, I, you know, back to the campaign platform, that just, that really stuck with me tonight. You know, I don't think that that should even be mentioned, what I campaign on. You know, and I'm not certain if this thing came down to an acre in a hot dog cart, that they're, they're not gonna push this through. You know, I think that's somebody, and I've said this many times before, but things don't make it this far down the process unless the votes are there. And I've never been proved wrong yet. So I think the votes are there, and that's nothing personal. But I think that you're not gonna go through this process and hold public hearings, and knowing that you're gonna have a couple hundred people show up unless you, you're in full intent as to proceed with this annexation. So, you know, those are a lot of opinions I have, but I, I just would prepare all of y'all to, to understand and know, unless I'm wrong the first time that this annexation will probably pass, no matter what's said. So use this opportunity tonight, and get up here and say what you need to say. Just keep it respectful, and hopefully we can have a good dialogue. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. And let me, and let me be clear, since you mentioned it, and I mentioned it. When I, when I said that I had run, run on this, I believe in it. I didn't run on it just to have a platform. I ran on it because I happen to believe that it's the right thing for the city to do. So from my perspective, I still feel that way. We studied it. Slaughter and Associates did that study for us. So from my perspective, I'm not trying to fill a check mark. I'm trying to do something that I think is the right thing for the city. So let me be really clear on that. This is not just to be filling a campaign promise. This is to be doing what I felt was the right thing to do in the first place. I only said it because I wanted to be clear that I have not, this is not a new, this is not a new subject matter from my perspective. This is something that I think has been talked about now for, as I said, almost a year and a half, certainly two years in terms of having been out there to have the discussion. So, all right, anyone else wishing to make any comments as it relates to the annexation before we go into public hearings? Okay, all right. So under our normal public hearing process, we will allow thirty minutes for pro and thirty minutes for con. And I have a feeling that the thirty minutes for con is gonna take up all the time, because I don't know that I see anyone in here that's gonna be pro. We will see. Somebody surprised me. Do we have any people who are gonna speak in favor of the annexation? Besides me? Okay. So what I would like to do is, we have our city clerk, we'll keep timing. And as per our usual methodology, we will do thirty minutes. If you have anyone, is there, is there a homeowners' association here? Who has a spoke, do you have a spokesperson, perchance? Who has a spoke, do you have a spokesperson perchance?
I'm part of the homeowners association, but I do not speak for homeowners association.
Okay.
I would be glad to speak for me.
I'm sorry?
I would be glad to speak for me.
Well, and you're welcome to come do that, but what we'll do is allow y'all to come forward, and if you would, if, if you have someone who's, who is a spokesperson for you, then that would be wonderful, so we'll perhaps cut down on some of the redundancy, because I think, I imagine a lot of it has to do with taxes. But Chuck, if you'd like to, come ahead. And if you would, when you come up, if you would introduce yourself, please.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Alderman.
Thank you.
My name is Chuck Schimpf, I live in University Estates, from Spaceman, Virginia. I've been listening to all the reasons for about a year and a half on why we're wanting to do this, and still I haven't heard a good reason why I would wanna be a part of. Mr. Mayor, you said something about fairness as far as what we receive as city services, and the annexation isn't gonna change our city services, we're still gonna have Clayton Village water, we're still gonna have East Octavia Hall wastewater district for our sewage, so none of that's changed. We'll still have TBA, that doesn't change, our four county grid. You said something about garbage pickup, that we'll see that immediately, and you've said that, y'all, we have garbage pickup, I have a garbage can that's this big, that's been more than sufficient for 17 years I've lived out there. If y'all send two routes down for garbage pickup, y'all are just gonna tear up our roads that much more? You know, we don't need that. Our fire department, volunteer fire department, I don't know if y'all are aware of this, changed us from a protection class 10 to a protection class 7 in March, with no additional taxes, but, yes?
If you would, we, part of what we do is capture this, and if the microphone is helpful, just so that people can hear who are Facebook Live, so.
We went from a protection class 10 to a protection class 7 at the end of March. So, our volunteer fire department is doing what we need them to do. In 17 years, they have been sufficient for our services. We have sheriff's department, sheriff, the one time that my dog set off the alarm in my house, sheriff was at the house before I was. You know, we're, we're fine on all that, we don't need any, we don't need the fire protection, and even then, if we have the fire protection, we don't have fire plugs to run the fire trucks, 'cause they don't have tank of trucks out there. And I know you're saying it's coming, 21 years, is that right? So, we'll, we'll wait on that one. The reasons I've heard so far, Alderman Siskel, you say we just need to pay our fair share. Well, what's fair about that? Alderman Little, I appreciate your honesty, you said we just need to pay more taxes out there. Hey, at least you said it. Perkins? I know you're probably against this, because you're part of the group that was left out to hang on the last annexation, I'm sorry the city let you down, but y'all know why all these people are here, we don't want them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schimpf. Okay, anyone else?
Hi, I'm Jim Christman, I also live in University Estates, 197 Edinburgh Drive. I'm also a faculty member of Mississippi State University, and you discussed tonight the 12 factors of reasonable, reasonableness, and I wanted to respond to some of those. But before I do, I wanna say, as my job as a professor, one of the things I've studied over the years is social responsibility, 'cause I think this is important, and one of the things that we've learned is, just because it's legal, doesn't mean it's right, doesn't mean it's ethical. So, let me respond to some of these factors. I have copies, by the way, if you'd like to have the detail. The need for expansion, you can take this a number of ways, but, but I wonder, other than ego, to hit 30,000 or whatever, why do you need expansion? You seem to have plenty of money to be able to build medians down Highway 12 that nobody really needs or wants. Whether that, it's in the path of growth, well, to get here tonight, I had to drive all the way around Mississippi State University, so we're not in the path of growth, I live in University Estates, that's that southern part down there. We're almost completely surrounded by Mississippi State. Health hazards, I've lived there 17 years, I haven't seen any, any big health hazards, we're just doing fine, and so are my neighbors. Financial ability, in some ways is beyond, beside the point, because we have all the services that we need, so again, all it's going to do is, you wanna get our revenue so you can go spend it somewhere else. As far as looking at financial ability, given past performance, looks pretty doubtful to me. Zoning and overall planning, last time I looked, we had not had any asbestos factories going up in my neighborhood, we seem to be doing pretty well in that regard, so I don't see any crying need for more zoning. Services, we have all the services, Chuck's already mentioned that. Natural barriers, as I said, Mississippi State is a big natural barrier, if you look at that southern portion, it's completely blocked off from the city by Mississippi State. Past performance, we've talked a little bit about that, the 21 years, so not too good a record in that regard. Economic impact, you say that taxes, that's the property taxes, and the reason, well, how about this, there's a lot of hidden costs that come with being part of the city, one is the codes, which means that we have to get our houses up to code anytime we wanna have renovations, or we wanna sell our house, and things of this nature. What it basically amounts to is you wanna appropriate our property rights, or a portion of those property rights. Voting strength, protected minorities, I don't really know, in my area, we don't have a, a lot of protected minority people, so I can't really say much more than that. Whether we're enjoying economic and social benefits, I guess that's, it varies by person to person, we have the benefits we need already, so I can't see that we're enjoying a lot of additional stuff from the city. And finally, other factors, opposition from the community, we did a petition, when we had our last meeting of University Estates, 35 people showed up, 35 people signed the petition. We ended up with 80, excuse me, with 74 people signing the petition. Now, you guys know how difficult it is to get people to respond. We got over 50% of all the households represented in University Estates in this survey, and over 50% of all the residents, and only about 40% of those attended that meeting. So, there is a lot of opposition to this annexation, because we know we're gonna get nothing out of it, we're just gonna pay for someone else's benefit. I have copies of the petition and the thing, and I'll pass those on.
I'll say, Mayor Matt.
Thank you. Alderman Carver?
Not to hold against their time, but I'll say from a minority voting standpoint, it was a negative impact, but it was only by a half a percentile, maybe?
That's correct.
For the record.
It was half a percentile, so, okay. All right, um, all right, your time is, okay. All right, anyone else wishing to speak? This, the lady here, the lady here in yellow, I saw her first.
Hello, Mayor.
Yes.
Hello, Alderman. My name is Claire Smith Greer. I went to high school with Alderman Roy and Alderman Henry Vaughn, one of the best one-in-backs Starkville High School ever saw. I'm here to speak from the heart. My husband married me and took me away from Starkville for 30 years, and he brought me home, and he asked me where I wanted to go, and I said, "I want to go back to Starkville." So, we looked and looked for a lot, and we finally found one in Shealy Hills. My younger brother lives across the pond from me, it is a wonderful, wonderful neighborhood, it means a lot to me. But we bought that lot mainly because it was in the county. When I was in high school, I had a home ec teacher named Mrs. Martha Valentine, that was the best home economics teacher in the world. And we had to, the first year, we, we made a dress, the second year, we built a kitchen, and the third year, we built a house. And the main thing Ms. Valentine always emphasized when we were building that house was, "Build it in the county, your taxes will be lower." And every time I drive past her house now on South Montgomery, though she's been gone many years, her house is now in the city, and all I can think about was, "Oh, Ms. Valentine would be crushed, because her house is now in the city." So, I am begging y'all, I came back, y'all, from Memphis, Tennessee, that's a big city, I don't want to be in another big city. I bought in the county, and I would really appreciate y'all listening to the gentleman that spoke before me, that have all the facts, but I'm speaking from my heart. I'm glad to be back in Starkville, and I'm glad to live where I live. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Greer. Thank you. Okay, yes, sir?
I'm David Oswald.
I'm sorry, David.
David Oswald?
Oswald.
Yeah, I live out in Clayton Village. Now, I'm probably, probably the ones that are, you know, I, I don't, I don't have a big house or anything, but I own my own place, okay? And I know they're not gonna give us everything we need, I know, because we, we have good garbage out there, we have electricity, you know, our electricity's probably a little bit higher, but you can't give it electricity, no you can't, you never can. But there's a lot of places that are not on this that should be on this, if we're gonna be on this. And to me, it looks like they're getting favoritism, you know, like Gin Lake across the street, they're not on there. The county barn, they're not on there. I mean, the road behind, behind the county barn, they're not on there, none of that, they're not on there. And, you know, you're talking about the place out on the highway, that you're talking about you'd have to build a fire department for, well, so what? That'd be enough money for those people's taxes, it's like these people, I mean, it's just like a bad thing, I mean, you're just, it's just like showing people, like, these people are getting favoritism, these people are getting favoritism, everybody knows it, I'm sorry, everybody knows it. But let me explain one thing to you, if you annexes, if you do annexes, I will be here every meeting, all the time, and as a promise.
That would be fine, thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak to this?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Alderman, I'm Dwight Priceau. I have two properties in the area between 82 and 182. Interesting enough, most people out there that wanna shop, go to West Point or Columbus, the addition of these wonderful barriers in a right-of-way, too narrow on Highway 12, makes people avoid it like the plague, which impacts your businesses. I also noted that there's very few minorities that are in the impacted area, proposed impacted area, but if you're hell-bent to annex it, which apparently you are, it will be great to have Lakeside Road paved, Boyd Road paved, Pat Station Road paved, East Sand Creek, and Timberline Drive. It'll also be nice to have a fire line out there, a fire station, probably a police station, and all of those things need to be out there, because as you pointed out, Mississippi State is a barrier. It's going to be almost impossible to get a fire truck from the main station, which is the closest one to any of those areas. So, you've gotta bring that up. And the other things that we come up with, if you do annex it, we will definitely be in Chatsworth Court with you, and we hope to add all of these things that are needed to the annexation decree that the court would issue. And then, if you don't fulfill your obligations, we'll be back in court with a contempt citation and ask to be deannexed and request all of our taxes paid back.
All right, thank you, Mr. Priceau.
Nice, Mayor Alderman. I'm Bill Chapman, I'm in University Estates, we have covenants. One of the things that you said you could offer us was the, the rules for how to build our houses, et cetera. Our covenants require an acre per lot minimum, so that we can have our septic systems safe. It also requires a minimum square footage, so that our houses will be big. And, you know, we have the freedom of, of not having to apply for permission to make changes to our properties. We have the freedom not to have an inspection, but because we're homeowners, it's to our benefit to do it right according to codes, so, so it's not going to help us. We, we want to look for a win-win agreement that makes everybody happy, and I don't see a win for us in the University Estates. We have our covenants, we have our rules, there are businesses that we don't allow there in the covenants. There's agriculture things we don't allow there in the covenants. And so, we, we've got our own governing through our covenants. So, we just respectfully ask you to consider that maybe we don't need to add another level of management over these people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman.
I'm Richard Forbes, I've lived in University Estates.
I'm sorry, say your name again.
Richard Forbes.
Forbes, thank you, all right, Mr. Forbes.
I've lived in University Estates for 50 years, and I've seen it grow, of course, and I'm decently familiar with the demographics of this red area in South 182. That area is basically predominantly white, which has already been mentioned, and I'm thinking if you just look at this map seriously, go home and look at the definition of gerrymandering, you've got it. Before this is done, if you do do it, you certainly ought to look at the population base there and see if you can, see what that looks like.
We have done that, that's part of our study, it's, it's on our website if you'd like to take a look at it. Thank you, sir, all right, thank you.
I'm Darren Weber, proudly to live in the county. I've got a few questions, and I don't know if you'll answer them, if you do, fine, if you don't, well, that's what it is. Why are most of the apartment complexes drawn out? If you're after, if you're after people, there, there they are, and you drew them out of your maps.
Well, since you've asked a question, I'll, I'll answer it real quickly, that was what the board, as a group of, at five at the time, it looks like maybe four now, were supportive of, so.
I'll answer as well. My opinion is, typically individuals that live within apartment complexes are students, and they don't actively register in the town, that they're attending college.
There is a lot of families living in the apartment complexes as well. All right, there's not a whole lot of difference between a fire rating of a seven to a four, it's, it's minor, it's minute. But you wanna triple my taxes over what I'm gonna save in fire rating for trash bags? What happens when all the coons and the opossum and the dogs tear them up? 'Cause I'm not gonna pick it up, if I put it at the road, not my property anymore. Nothing against the police department and fire department, this is not a bash against them, but if you get called out to my house, I promise, the sheriff department would beat the cops there, because they're on the other side of town. Mississippi State cops would beat them there. Fire department as, as well. The volunteer fire department will beat the, the city there, I, I bank on it. The one call you brought up a couple meetings ago, that you guys came to on, I can't even think, it's, it's right out, right by the campus bookmark, it happened to be the city was leaving a call, and they happened to be in transit, it, we asked for their help, they were right there, it was, it, it just happened to be perfect timing. I'm with the fire department, but I'm not representing the fire department, I'm representing me, I'm not speaking for East Octavia Hall at all. You know, and there's nothing against Chief Yarborough, a lot of his, a lot of his firemen come from the volunteer fire department, somebody made a bash the other, last time about getting a better fire department, asking where 90% of his firemen came from. It's amazing, we suck, but we still are full-time volunteers. And Pafford, what a joke. I asked my wife if this hap, annex happens, to haul me back into OCH's area and let them come pick me up. Two ambulances is not gonna cover this annexation, and they deprived, they deleted one a while Isn't there a five-mile rule to the fire rating? I believe there's a five-mile rule to the rating. I know I'm gonna be outside the five mile, so they're gonna make us a 4X. So they're going to make us a four X. That don't make no sense to us. I don't understand what four X stands for. I just, please, look into yourselves and look at this annexation if you're in our shoes. There wasn't, nobody raised their hand for pros. Nobody. Please do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Okay. Anyone else? I see a lady and then the gentleman behind her.
Thank y'all for allowing me to address you. I wrote my down because I knew I would be nervous, but my name is Donna Miller. My husband and I, Dr. Bill Miller, have like a 500-acre farm out on, starting at Old West Point Road and it reaches back to the bypass, the eighty-two. And the annexation is going to take in part of our agricultural land and so we're not ever going to plan on developing that or putting any buildings or anything. We're just maintaining for wildlife and agricultural purposes. In the past years, Starkville City Government has acted honor, with honor and integrity. However, that pattern has been abandoned with the current annexation plan. Current annexation law does not require notification to owners of land in consideration for annexation until the annexation plan is approved by the city board. Just because something is legal does not make it right. Social media and TV news is not an acceptable method of notifying potential annexation property landowners. Honor and integrity should dictate informing all parties potentially affected by this decision from the beginning. How can the city of Starkville justify annexation of new properties when it's already failed to provide all city services to the people in the area annexed almost twenty years ago? According to state law, it is well within their rights to begin de-annexation proceedings when a municipality has failed those citizens as the city of Starkville has. Why has the current proposed annexation properties been chosen while other areas such as the Highlands to the east of Starkville been excluded? Does this benefit a property, apartment property owners within the current city limits? Finally, in the current age of environmental concerns, should Starkville continue to contribute to urban sprawl? There's a great deal of undeveloped property within the current city limits. If increasing the tax base is the justification for the current proposed annexation, then a more efficient and environmentally conscious method of enhancing tax revenues would be to encourage and partner with those landowners. Like I said before, we have no plans to ever develop our property on the Highway eighty-two bypass and I would ask the Starkville Board to reconsider this current annexation plan for the good of Starkville and the honor of its government. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
I am Jeff Foster and I'm one of a very small group in this room. I live in the city of Starkville. I travel outside every morning to go to work. Several things have been mentioned here. One is a barrier. My property's on Pat Station Road. There is a limited access highway that has to be crossed to get to my property. Several things have been mentioned, but one thing has, and we're talking about fairness, there's nothing can be offered by this annexation except fire protection. So is it fair for the rest of the city of Starkville to pay for a six-inch line to be ran in those areas and never have the ability to sell one drop of water out of it? You don't meter fire protection water. There's no other thing the city can offer except that one thing that's going to cost the rest of the city a tremendous amount of money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Yes, sir?
My name's Carl Ivy and I'm one of the low-hanging fruits out there in Clayton Village that people seem to be looking for. I own Village Cycle Center. I've been there for forty years, running that motorcycle store. Taxes are one thing. Another concern that we have is all the codes. I have some friends in town that own property that are in the industrial park and all and all of a sudden it's become a nightmare to try to make additions or changes to their business. And that's going to be a real concern to us. We've had a, I just can't believe some of the things that I've been told that's taken place to try to open up some new stores or new businesses in the industrial park intact. Changes to their buildings that have to be made and all those things. Forty years, I've never had to come to anybody to ask you if I could make an addition to my store, which I've done on three different occasions. We went from a very small store to fifteen, sixteen thousand square feet in that store. And there's a lot of money that has come through that store. A lot of people in this room and probably even some of y'all have been customers of ours over the years. There's a lot of revenue that comes in, but to pay additional taxes for no additional services, I've been there forty years, I don't have to stay anymore. It's time for me to go anyway, but I sure would hate to close that store. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ivy. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
My name is Tim Allison. I live in the Shealy Hills neighborhood. I've just got one question. We've got a rather large room full of people out here that are against annexation. Why are several of you as aldermen wanting to drag a bunch of people into the city of Starkville city limits that don't want to be there? Why? You're forcing us to be a part of something we don't want to be a part of. Why?
Thank you, sir. All right. Yes, sir?
Thank you for the time, lucked officials.
We have, we have four and a half minutes left.
Well, I won't use it. So, thank you for the time, lucked officials. I would, my name is Alan Henn, like a chicken, H-E-N-N. I'm a big chicken.
Thank you, sir.
I have two Ns and I live in University Estates. I agree with everything that's been said, so I'm not going to repeat. I do want to take offense at one of the things you said, Mr. Man. You said zoning was an important part. Frankly, I've lived in many cities, many towns in this United States and the zoning in Starkville is some of the absolute worst I have seen. Previous couple of administrations have definitely made improvements. I don't see where you're going with this one. So when I was looking for a house, I essentially had no choice but to live out there in that University Estates. There wasn't anything else because of what? Look at the soils. When you start going out to some of those areas, you're going to start talking some real serious money in construction and those companies that you're hoping are going to build out there aren't going to be building out there till all that other empty property's done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Ma'am, may I be recognized?
We're not done yet. Oh, you were going to ask him something?
No, ma'am. You're saying you've got four minutes. Is nobody forward? So why can't they just hold, have a whole hour and we listen to what they got to say? I mean, why we spend thirty minutes? Why we just can't listen to what they got to say? They got the whole hour. Nobody, nobody forward in here.
If anyone wants to say something that hasn't been said, you are certainly welcome to do so. I saw someone wanting to come up. Yes, sir? Yes, sir?
My name is Bill Duncan. I live in University Estate. I want to tell you why I chose to move to University Estates. I was staying with a good honorable friend in South Montgomery and when I left to go his, to his house to go to work, I was in a three-block pileup. The traffic was so bad, I said, I don't want to live down in this area. But I found a lovely little house in University Estate and chose to live there because I could leave my house and drive all the way to Columbus where my office was and never have a red light. Twenty-three minutes, twenty-four minutes. We chose Starkville over Columbus because of property values, et cetera, but we also were told the University Estate would never be brought into the city limits because we had the block of Mississippi State. So we have a very nice little community, good neighbors, and we feel like we're very comfortable. We don't think y'all can add any value to our housing. We think that it's a comfortable community and also I'd like to remind you of this, we have better water than you do in Starkville. Mr. Russell was running our water system out there. We had the best water I ever had in my life. Now we're with Clayton, Clayton Water System. It's still very good water. Come out there and drink some with us. We'll sell you some property out there. You'd enjoy being out there. Now, as far as this, I don't understand why you started looking for thirty thousand and let so many people drop out that would not be included in the annexation that you first proposed because we needed you to take leadership role in all of the apartment complexes because really and truly I've seen more apartments. I believe one time there was a moratorium about apartment buildings here in the city. There's no moratorium now. Our only hope is that a hundred years from now, Mississippi State will buy us out. That will be, that will be an interesting time because they're coming into our area all the time and we are choice property for Mississippi State. What would the city benefit if Mississippi State bought us out? I think that's a worthy thought. Do you think so? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Anyone else? Good evening.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the rest of the board. I would like to think-
State your name for us, please.
Oswald Brendan Herrera.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera.
I've lived in Starkville forty-two years and for a while I paid city taxes and of course now I'm living in University Estates and things are good the way they are. In Mississippi State, there are a number of elderly people on fixed income, some of them, all right? And they've been paying, you know, taxes and things like that. I'm eighty-three years old and I thank the Lord for that. But if you consider the number of people my age or near my age or those just entering it, they're going to be burdened by additional taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. All right. All right, that is, that is thirty minutes. Mr. Schiff, you've already spoken, sir.
I'm cut off.
I'm sorry?
I'm cut off.
Well, our thirty minutes is up. Does anyone have anything they wish to add that hasn't been already said? All right. Thank you. I'm going to close it as a public hearing then. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. Do I have anything from the board members who wish to speak? Vice Mayor Perkins.
Mayor, thanks for the recognition. Before you go, let me say one thing here to those in attendance. When the citizens come in, I'm going to say a few things here. When the citizens' comments arose, it was indicated to the audience that if you want to speak on annexation, you don't have to give three minutes here. And when we get down to the public hearing, that you will have a right to be heard. When I went to law school, they taught me a concept called due process. You know, we need to be fair to the people and we need to treat everybody right. There was nothing about the rules said at the beginning of the meeting that when we get down to the public hearing that there will be thirty minutes for this group to speak and thirty minutes for the other group to speak. The rules should have been put out front. Nobody here tonight should be denied the opportunity to come into their city hall and speak on any issue that they desire because this is their building and their government. And I invite everybody who's here tonight to come back here on Tuesday, the second day of July of 2019, because we're going to have as a second public hearing and it is my opinion and belief that there's going to be a motion at that meeting to adopt this annexation plan and there's going to be some discussion. So those of you who wanted to speak were denied the opportunity to speak tonight and that was wrong. That was wrong and I appreciate the gentleman from Seven seeking recognition here mentioning that others had a right to be heard. Now, one thing I'm going to say tonight and I'm not going to say a whole lot more tonight, but there's been some talk about the twelve factors that the Supreme Court has talked about and we're going to get us a good understanding on those factors on Tuesday, July 2nd of 2019. But before you leave tonight, it is very important that I share these comments with These hard-working taxpayers and citizens who live in University Estates, a neighborhood, an environment, and a community of their choosing, they chose to live in University Estates. If they do not want to be in the city, as one gentleman said, why drag them into the city? What is the motive? Leave these people alone. We do not need to have government regulations trying to force these people to live somewhere they do not want to live. You know, they talked about their community, how nice it is and how they went into choosing where they want to live, all of the amenities about where they want to live and what it's such a nice location. And all of a sudden, we have heard from everybody tonight who has come down here saying that they do not want to be annexed. So what's the agenda, city of Starkville? Why can't we just step back and say, we are going to honor your concerns because you have the right to choose? You have the right to say where you want to live. If you had wanted to be within the corporate limits of the city of Starkville, you would have so chosen. I don't blame you. If you don't want to live in the city, don't trust the city. And we're going to talk more about that. We're going to stay tuned to July 2nd and talk about the rest of that, but as to tonight, do not leave out of here thinking that you are not going to be heard. At the next meeting on the citizens' comments, the rules are that every citizen can speak for three minutes. I wouldn't trust waiting until public hearing because no telling what the rules may be. Come down and speak your three minutes. If everybody in the room wants to speak and we are here to midnight, this is your meeting. I'm going to say what I want to say. You know, they, you know, they get tired of me, but I don't care. I'm up here for the people. Don't rush these people away from here. You got thirty minutes. You got twenty minutes. You got ten minutes. You got five. We'll make these people feel like that they don't want to come back here anymore. Let's treat these people right, like they are human beings. These people work hard all their lives and they saved all their lives. They have enough taxes, they're burdened with taxes and the city wants to bring them in. Platform. What I ran on. There's no basis to do that. Let's not strong-arm these people in the city. We have enough governmental regulations in this country. We don't need none down here in Starkville. this country. We don't need none down here in Starkville, Mississippi. Leave these people alone. These are good, hardworking taxpayer citizens. As the gentleman said, it'd be additional taxes. He's eighty-three years of old, of age. This is a beautiful community. Sheilh Hills is a beautiful community. Nice community. Well-respected community. Nice homes. Nice neighborhood. They don't want to be bothered. I don't blame them. Have their own good quality of life. Want the city telling them what to do with their property, what they can add on, what they can build. What you going to do when you bring them in? They are sufficiently taken care of. We've heard sufficient evidence tonight. The evidence, in my opinion, is, is clear and convincing to abandon the part B of this plan from this proposed annexation. And of these twelve factors, there are a lot of factors that, that, in my opinion, do not even exemplify anything that, that even spell reasonableness. Going to trust the city, going to provide you some services, and done it for twenty-one years ago. So I invite all of you back at the next meeting. This is your boardroom. This is not, this, it does not belong to the, to the mayor. It does not belong to the vice mayor. It doesn't belong to all of them. None of us paid this mortgage by ourselves. We all pay, pay for this building. This is your building. This is your home. You talk, come down, but you just come down to the citizens' comment. Next time, that's how we're going to skin that cat. We're not going to wait until we get down to another area, then the rules are going to be different. I applaud you. That's why I told you, that's why I made the comments when I walked in, because I kind of sensed something. That's experience. That's why I said what I said when I came, when I first, the meeting first started. I felt it. Been here long enough to know the difference. Don't care what nobody say before me or after me. I'm going to talk as long as I want to. That's what I'm elected to do. So I encourage everyone, bring some more people. I, I love University Estates. Leave them out. Don't want to bring University Estates. What you going to bring them in for? They tell you don't want to be here in the city. Bring, bring some more people, good people out there. So we meet again next, on July 2nd, 2019, at 5:30 PM. And every citizen, according to the board rules, have three minutes to speak. So anybody who wants to speak under the board's rules can speak. So thank y'all for coming, and, and Mayor, I'm going to yield the floor. So hopefully, when we conclude this hearing, we'll at least adjourn the meeting. So if some of us want to go out there and speak to these good citizens, we can. And I'd like for us to, now, adjourn the meeting, just have a recess for a few minutes. So I'm going to yield the floor, Mayor, and at this time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Alderman Carter?
And I'll say on the apartment moratorium, the gentleman had spoke to that. I've, I've tried on two occasions without a second. So if anybody on the board wants to, to attend the moratorium for twelve months, I'm okay with that. I drove down University Drive the day in, in the lot of, lot of Cotton District area, and then University Drive area, and all over town. And I'm okay with, with slowing our growth on the apartment side for a year to see how our bidding is over twelve months to twenty-four months. And then, secondly, question was posed to me, would the individuals, if they were annexed, would they be participating in the next municipal election in two years? And the answer would be yes. So what kind of timeframe also with the November elections would... No, I mean, that's a valid question. Yes, obviously, two years is enough time. But would they be also included in the November elections? Well, there's nothing on the city's-
No, that would, that would depend on when it made its way through the chance record.
But you would be voting in the city elections in two years. Thank you.
Alderman Carter, anything else?
Ma'am?
Anything else? Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one else, we will move into the remainder of the agenda. Thank you all for your attendance. We appreciate your being here. We'll look forward to, to seeing you in July 2nd.
Mayor Cooe, take a brief recess.
Do I have a motion to recess?
So moved, ma'am.
I believe that's, I believe it's time. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is going to be Item B under Mayor's Business, which is consideration of an agreement with Neil Schaefer to survey the Sportsplex and McKee Park.
Motion approved, ma'am.
I have a motion for approval from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk. Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second one is consideration of an agreement with Neil Schaefer to survey Cornerstone Park at a fee not to exceed fifty-
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Sistrunk, a second from Alderman Little. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right. Motion, motion carries.
Mayor, of course.
Let me, well, I've got the, let me count the votes. So that was four to two. Motion carries. All right, yes, Alderman Vaughn.
The first one, is the first one, is that's the, for all the parts, the first one?
The first one was for Sports-
Is that for all the parts or just two?
Sportsplex and McKee.
Okay, you want to do instead of just O two?
I'm sorry?
You instead of just O two, right?
Yes, Sportsplex and McKee.
Okay.
All right, the next item was put on, was placed on consent. The next item we have is a resolution adopting and approving the interlocal agreement in support of the Stark Crossing Development Project. This is something that was passed, I believe, in 2016 as a TIF, and this is now the bonds that are coming, coming due. Is that, is that a way to do that? Anyway, this is an approval of the agreement to move that agreement forward, to move that, move that project forward. So Alderman Sistrunk.
I'm going to move that, that we approve this, but I'm also going to take this opportunity to say that I, because it's, it's a necessary step to finish a process that was begun by the last board. But I hope that as projects come forward in the future, we will look at those projects more carefully in terms of where we're going to commit city dollars. This, this particular project diverts a hundred percent of the sales taxes and a hundred percent of the ad valorem taxes, incremental ad valorem taxes, to, to the developer. While I'm certainly always willing to look at how the city can participate, I think we need to be reasonable in how we go about that participation. So with that said, I move a program.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Little. Discussion, and, and let me say, since I can do this, I absolutely agree. I had no idea that it was a hundred percent of ad valorem and a hundred percent of sales tax. I cannot imagine that, I don't know of another, another project we've done a hundred percent on, and, and I think that's most unfortunate that we find ourselves there. So anyway, I, I do believe in tax increment financing or TIFs, but I certainly don't believe that a hundred percent of any of that is an appropriate way for us to go. But I have a motion to second. Further discussion? Alderman Beatty?
Mayor, I came from the state where I had not heard of this until I got up here. And I was very surprised to find that a town that's got people knocking, knocking, knocking their doors down to get in was being granted tax incentives to come in here and build, build projects. I, I just, that's, I hadn't used to that. And I think almost under any, not any circumstance, should we get in, stay in the business of granting tax, inducing businesses to come to Stark, Mississippi. We're a southeastern conference, college town. And we're going, the business is coming here. We need businesses to come in, build, Both of these are pretty standard conditions. The one that I'd like to point out is on the final plat. It's number four. The required sewer service line will have to be constructed and accepted by the city or in acceptable form of financial surety provided for the installation of the sewer service prior to the releasing of the final plat to be recorded at the offices of Octave County Chancery Clerk. And this condition is to kind of allow for some flexibility for them to get that done after this approval. That's just one thing that they'll have to do before we release the plat, because I believe the property owner has a buyer, and there is a closing date that would occur before the next board meeting. Do you have any questions?
All right, any questions of Mr. Havelin? Any questions? Is the applicant here?
Jason Pepper. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, anything you wish to add to what Mr. Havelin said?
No, he's done a good job.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? Okay, seen nothing. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A motion from Mr. Beatty. Do I have a second? Is that with the conditions as outlined?
Yes.
Okay, and do you want to make that... We make that a motion for the preliminary and the final plat?
Yes.
All right.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Beatty and a second from Alderman Little for both the preliminary and the final plat with the conditions as specified or as recommended. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. It is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Havelin. Thank you, Mr. Pepper. All right, next item is under engineering. It's consideration of authorizing the mayor to approve an as-needed contract with Neil Schaefer to provide traffic impact study verification and other transportation-related services. I think this came up by virtue of... And Mr. Kemp is on vacation, so Mr. Burnett is here in his place if we have any questions. But in essence, it came up because of the issue with the Valentine property and the traffic study associated with that. And there may be some other opportunities when we might need to see if we have someone who can help us with traffic impact studies. I think that was Mr. Kemp's thought on that. So if you have any questions of Mr. Burnett, I'm sure he'd be willing to answer. So, Alderman Sistrunk.
Have there been other occasions where this has been problematic, and bringing it to the board on a case-by-case basis would be problematic? And as you're coming up to answer that one, I'll ask how this fits with the idea of doing a comprehensive street plan and traffic study for the city?
I don't necessarily think it fits in that but for the fact that at some point in time, we will need to do that. I have asked... Edward and I, Mr. Kemp and I, have tossed around the idea of when a developer comes in, having this as an option to get them to do a traffic study. We use our person, who's going to be representing the city's interests, and then have the developer support that or pay for that based on the fact that they would have done one, but this lets us have someone who's a third party as opposed to a developer's traffic impact person.
What I'm hearing is that along with this, the cost of these services would be passed on to the developer?
Depending on how it is. I mean, depending on what it's for. If it's something the city's doing, obviously not. But if the developer, such as the one for the Valentine property would be, then the answer would be yes. It would be one of those things that... Because they're creating the situation that it's not an impact fee, but it is a study that they're requiring, and we're just choosing to have someone who is a third-party neutral.
So the question then is back to you, Mr. Burnett. How often does this come up that we would need a blanket agreement in place? And how much does it delay these things being done if it has to come to the board for board approval?
Sure. These don't come up every time. These are really for areas that you would think... South Montgomery for the Valentine property is a great example. You know, if something develops on the far end of the industrial road, it's not going to happen. But I would say a couple of times a year would be my guess. And Edward may or may not, you know, have better insight into that. But I would say a few times a year. It does save, obviously, city staff a lot of time. And these are third-party professionals that are doing this. And so, you know, a few times a year, I would guess. And whether it's the developer using our services or just we're validating a study they've done, it could be either or.
And the other piece of this that would keep me from being willing to have a blanket contract is that idea that we don't know who will ultimately pay for this and what those costs are. And enough of an account to have an open-ended contract makes me a little uncomfortable.
Sure. I do know that two other areas that the city engineer wished to utilize this would be for just city studies. If we have areas that we're looking at lights or different things like that, as well as the fact that they have some equipment that's really advanced, cameras and things. And so I think he was hoping to utilize some of those.
Right, they do have things that we don't have. And it doesn't bother me in the slightest. I mean, this was something that Mr. Kemp had brought forward and asked the board. If the board's interested in doing it, that's fine. But I do think that we do need to have any... Use a... Utilize a service that is not developer-centric, let's put it that way.
And right now, what I'm hearing is it doesn't come up so frequently that it's not taking that much resources. There are other things that we do. I can think of one or two through the city clerk's office that involve more time on a much more consistent basis that we could perhaps look at.
Any other questions of Mr. Burnett? Okay. All right, any further discussion? Okay, anyone interested in making a motion on this matter? Okay, seeing none, we will remove this from the... Or no action taken on this matter. We have a claim stock at next under Finance Administration.
Same move.
That was from Mr. Alderman Carver. So we have a motion from Alderman Carver of second.
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrunk. Discussion. Oh, well, too late. I wanted to put an S by it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
All right, by a vote of four to one, motion carries. Let's see, and the next page, and the next page. We have under Parks, consideration of approval of a lease agreement. Is that a motion? All right, and a motion from Alderman Sistrunk, a second from Alderman Little. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries. And that's it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have ended our regular meeting. We have no executive session, and I do have language calling for the work session. So in accordance with the notice required under Mississippi Code 254113, the board will be having a work session on the 28th of June 2019 at 12:00 p.m. That meeting will be held at City Hall in the second-floor Conference Room, located at 110 West Main Street. Public and media are invited to attend. Notice should be provided to this work session with one hour of this meeting by posting such notice at City Hall. Notice for the work session should be made part of the minutes of the board meeting, and it will be an open and public meeting for the city of Starkville. The public and press are invited to attend. And while I'm mentioning it, we will be having a presentation from a parking meter group on presenting what we might consider having meters in either Cotton District or downtown or both. So they're going to be making a presentation to us on that as a possibility to look at. So that should be interesting.
Well, Mayor, you may get the vice mayor back to another work session.
Really? All right, well, see what? I'll excuse myself. You can run it, and I'll watch it on Facebook.
No, on that subject, man.
Yeah, no, you don't trust me. You never know, okay? All right, anything further? Do I have a motion to adjourn? A motion from Alderman Little to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Beatty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
We are in adjournment.
Thank you all, ladies and gentlemen.